7:08. We will call the meeting of the Select Board of November 12th, 2024 to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by BORN TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time.
I'm recording.
It's Jamie. Jamie, hi Jamie. Jamie.
Hi.
Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line, The Zoom meeting ID is 869-577-55505, and the password is BOURNE, all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise their hand icon until the chair. Ask them to unmute, and then if I don't see you, like, just say hello. I will note that Melissa Ferretti is attending the meeting via Zoom. And in person are Anne-Marie Saronian, Mary James Strangelow, Peter Meyer, and Jean Azerovitz. I don't know, did I say all items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel, and all of our veterans who were celebrated yesterday. Salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Report out on executive session. Board had some interesting discussion in executive session, and we'll report out finally when things are resolved. Reading the Select Board vision and mission statements. Would someone like to read the vision?
BORN is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages.
I didn't hear what you said about the executive section.
No action was taken.
We report out on the executive session when the matters are finalized.
Okay.
So we have not.
Continued them, or what?
So have we continued them? We have made recommendations to Town Council, who will be filing court documents in accordance with the discussion that we had at an executive session.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Were you interested in a particular case? Is that why you're here? No, you're just, okay.
Is that? Can you shed any light?
No, no, the court documents, whatever court documents, the fight that our attorney will file will be based on the recommendations of the attorney and the discussion of the board's selectmen. But he has to finalize the documents, and once they're filed with the court, they're public record.
Okay, so were some of these, was a determination made, and you're waiting for the lawyer to file those documents?
Yes, we are.
So they really have.
Will you come to the mic?
Yeah, could you come to the? I don't think we should.
I think we'll go in, Dennis.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand the process.
So, okay, so the process is the Town Council will come to the board and discuss options related to court cases and litigation. And then he will file documents based on his recommendations and the discussion of the board. Once those documents are filed with the court, they become public record.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to continue, or start over again?
Vision. Commission.
BORN is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community and the amenities that it affords. BORN embraces excellent education and offers the citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Mission?
I can read it. BORN will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, BORN will strive to improve that quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Community shout-out and recognition. Recognize the John Gallo Arena for 50 years in the town of BORN. Celebration was last Sunday, yeah, Sunday.
I also wanted to do a shout-out for the girls volleyball team.
Yes.
Playing tonight in the Final Four.
Yeah, so, so, girls volleyball team, not only are they in the Final Four, but they have received Team Academic Excellence Award, once again. And this is their second time in like the Final Four. They were there last year, too. And congratulations to the BORN High School football team. They won their first playoff game and have made it to the Elite Eight, and they will be playing in Carver on Friday night, November 15th, at 6:00 PM.
Very exciting.
And then a shout-out to the BORN Recreation Department for a fantastic chunker treat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Standing, lots of fun.
The Cookie Monster was great.
Cookie Monster was great. And then also, BORN High School's new Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society was established, and they just inducted five students into it, so.
Lots going on.
Also, I want to recognize the Town Clerk's Office because coming out of the national election, they did a great job, all things considered. I mean, it was a long process, and the staff was stressed to the limits, you know, but they got it done, and they were very diligent about it. And so, I mean, I was there on election night, you know, till almost 11:00, you know, waiting for the results. And, but I know for early voting and everything else, that they really pulled it together, and it wasn't easy. So I commend Mary Fernandez, who is officially retiring the first week in December, our Assistant Town Clerk. And we got Linda E. Fia, Sarita Amaral, and I am missing one.
Jamal.
Jamal. So, you know, and others, countless volunteers and election workers. So, really, great, great job. It's, and thank you, Barry, for, you know, for your leadership in this.
Yes.
So it's kind of interesting, I think it was 79% turnout in this election.
They were there.
There were over 5,000 ballots mailed out and mailed back in, and days of early voting, and they just did a fantastic job.
And overseas ballots, and I think that.
And write-ins, you know, so.
Till 2:30 in the morning, I believe. That's a lot.
Pretty amazing work. All right, then. Public comments on non-agenda items. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay. Seeing none. Presentation by Cape Lake Compact on the upcoming three-year plan. Welcome.
Hello. So while the presentation is being pulled up, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Margaret Song. I am the Evaluation Policy and Strategy Manager at the Cape Lake Compact. I am also a resident of BORN. Maggie Downey does send her regards. She's actually in Eastham, doing a similar presentation, and literally cannot be in two places at once. And I do just want to acknowledge that you have two wonderful board members. Bob Schofield is your rep to our community, to our board, as well as Bill Doherty as your alternate. Let's see if I can get this to work. Ah, okay. So for those folks in the audience who do not know who we are, and actually, I should stop and just pause and say, I have been asked to do this in about 15 minutes. These slides, there's 23 of them. I will not be reading all of them. I'll be going quickly through them, but if there are follow-up questions or follow-up conversations that you would like to have, I'm happy to do so. Okay. So for those folks that are in the audience that do not know who the Cape Lake Compact is, there are three main charges that we have. One is to offer an alternative power supply option to Eversource. There's energy efficiency programs, that's really our crown jewel that we've got, and consumer advocacy. We're reading lots of very dense documents and trying to make sure that we're doing things on your behalf. We just like to always remind folks that we do have a lot of participation in our communities. Last year, you had 1,444 folks, and it was a little over $2.6 million that they took advantage of. Some highlights from 2024. And I know many of you have actually participated in our programs, but many folks have done the home energy assessments, as well as taken advantage of our heat pump rebates. There are also a couple of other highlights. We did have an e-bike grant that we did pursue on behalf of the Cape and Vineyard. That is now fully subscribed at this point. We did have some appliance rebates that were out there. And then we were working with fossil fuel customers that are non-gas. We were doing a pilot that was for 100 households that were low and moderate income that combined heat pumps, solar PV, and battery storage. We're hoping to get some great results and hopefully introduce something like that in the future.
Can I interrupt and ask a question? Thanks, Margaret. Tell me a little bit more about the e-bike. Like, what was, who qualified? What was the incentive there for?
Sure. So we had two different tiers. It really depended upon both income and the type of e-bikes that you had. Really, what we were trying to do is get low and moderate income residents of our towns to be able to access alternative transportation, and in a way that was clean. And so you can see up here that it was 75% of the cost, up to $1,200, and then 90% of the cost, up to $1,500, was the enhanced incentive. All of those are right now issued, but if there is a second round, we would probably pursue that. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Great.
So it was transportation, and alternative modes of transportation for those people who may not otherwise be able to have transportation?
Correct. Okay, so here's something new. Again, I won't be going into all of the details, but we have just received a grant called the Home, oh, gosh, let me start again. Energy Saver Home Loan. This one is a combination of Massachusetts Community Climate Bank, and I have a few more details on this. So homeowners must make less than 135% of area median income. You can see up there what that is for us. So that's $166,000 roughly, a little bit more than that. You have to have a single-family home or a unit in a two-to-four unit. And if you have an energy savings of 20%, we don't expect you to know that. You would call, and we would tell you that, and walk you through the process. But if you do qualify, then there are loan amounts for $10,000 to $100,000. It's, as it notes right here, how the interest payments work, and we do have a number of banks that we are working with. You can see that the interest rate is very low, 0.5% for borrowers under 80% of area median income, and 2% for 80% to 135%. So this is great, and we know we have a lot of folks that fit into this category. And so part of what I'm here to do is just make sure that people are aware of it. Again, all of this stuff is not things that I expect you to memorize. We just want you to know and be able to pass this on to folks that need the information. Just so you know, these are some of the things that you can do in that loan. So if you're looking to re-roof, get windows, solar thermal, like, there's so many things in this grant that we have done, and this is all hoping to get people to a more energy-efficient state. This is another grant that we have applied for. This has been years in the making, I think four years. It is not live yet. It's going to launch December 2024. This one is not income-qualified, so for folks that, you know, are interested in looking for a solar loan, it's a 10-year loan, up to $50,000, and the target interest rate is below 3%, but they can go up to 5%. But we will be hopefully getting some of those details from the USDA, and we'll hopefully be able to launch it in December, which is right around the corner. Okay, so the reason why I'm here is actually to talk about our three-year plan. We are shifting from really an energy efficiency focus to a decarbonization focus. This is something that has been written into legislation, and so we are here to deliver on that. And so as part of the statute, there is a cessation of fossil fuel rebates. And so that's some of what you will see, is that there's no more new gas equipment rebates, but more of a focus on heat pumps. So what are the goals in the three-year plan? Decarbonization, equity, and customer experience. So there's a couple of things. One is that we are really looking at doing more for small businesses. So you'll see that we'll be launching things in 2025. And I should say that all of this is subject to a regulatory process under the Department of Public Utilities, and so we are up in front of them. Ultimately, at the end of the day, whatever gets approved by them is what we will launch into 2025, but this is what we have proposed at this time. But for charitable nonprofits, for small businesses, we are looking to offer up to 100% for upgrades. So what are the statewide things? So for residential and low-income customers, we have a variety of folks that fit into these categories. By low income, I mean up to 60% of state median income. Moderate income is up to 80% of median income, and then after that is market rate. But as you can see here, if you're a low-income customer, we're looking to do everything for you at no cost. If you are moderate and going through the turnkey effort, again, 100% of the cost. But you can even see still that at the market rate, we are offering some very generous incentives, or at least that is the proposal. And then we've got a variety of other things that we are looking to do, which includes getting you on this journey and doing the assessments and helping you triage where the best options are. Workforce development. You may have heard of Mass CEC or the Clean Energy Center. They are authorized through legislation to ask for at least $12 million. That funding is at $24 million, so you will see that there's going to be more robust workforce development offerings out there, trainings, and a lot of supplier diversity. One thing that we get asked a lot is, okay, well, I want to know how, you know, BORN is doing, or how, you know, XYZ community is well-represented or not. We do have a pretty robust dashboard that is being actually revamped right now, and that is at mass-save-data.com. And that is actually for all of the folks that are involved in our programs, including the utilities and Cape Lake Compact. You're also going to see that we're proposing to do a lot more marketing, trying to get people out there. A lot of times, people get these dense reports or rebate forms. It's a little hard to maneuver all of that, so we are trying to get it so that people can get it in a more digestible format. And then that was the three-year plan for the power supply rates. This is currently what we've got right here. You can see what our standard offering is at the very, I guess it's the third row. And then you can see the comparison with Eversource. We are lower than them at this juncture. I will say that this is, and, you know, for those folks at home, this is a little bit of an eye test, but you can see the CLC rate that is in green, it's the lighter color, and then the teal color is basic service, which is Eversource. You can see, these are, these are tiny, tiny dollar amounts. We do have lower rates at times, but there are going to be times where we are higher. And then just so folks know, and everybody, I think, does talk about this, pricing is higher. This is, electric bills are not going down, unfortunately. And so there's a lot that's going on, including natural gas pricing, pipeline capacity, public policy. So these are some of the things that we're trying to keep our eyes on to maybe, you know, try and make sure that some of that gets reduced. But there are a lot of factors that go into that. We do have an expert in-house. I am by no means the expert here, but, you know, we do want folks to be aware that there are quite a few things that are converging at this time. So I tried to do that very quickly so that you folks could get back on time. If you want to stay up to date with us, we've got a monthly newsletter. We also have all the social media up there, and so follow us, engage. But at the very least, what we want to make sure is that people, again, are aware of the programs and take advantage of them. You are paying into these programs, and so you should take advantage of them. I hear a lot of folks saying, well, I don't want to take something from somebody else. Please don't think that. You're paying, you deserve it, get involved. And that's it. These are, that's our website, our phone number, and the phone number for our power supply.
So if someone wants help for some of these programs, they just call the Cape Lake Compact, and they can get assistance in figuring out what program might work for them?
Absolutely. So we actually have in-house call center folks that live on the Cape. We are in South Yarmouth. You can call us from 8:30 to 4:30 every day. That's the 1-800-797-6699, in case that looks really little on screen for folks. Call, and we will guide you to your, the best things that fit you.
Who else has a hand up?
Melissa?
Yeah, I just want to say, I actually know of some, we had some tribal citizens that took advantage of the e-bike program, and it was a really great program, and it was actually very painless to apply. So thank you for that, and I'm glad you did bring that here to the meeting. So I do encourage folks to take a look at that. I know we have several folks that rely on alternate transportation. I see Mr. York here in the, in the audience, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you for mentioning the e-bike program, it is valuable.
Thank you for sharing that.
I have another question on Energy Star appliance rebates. Is this different than the Mass Save rebates?
Ah, so this is a great question. So Cape Lake Compact, just like the Got Milk campaign, Mass Save is the Got Milk brand, basically, for all of the Mass Save program administrators, which includes Cape Lake Compact. So we are your local face for Mass Save.
So if you're looking for, and I'm going to use a dehumidifier, for example, can, can you, we get help through Cape Lake Compact to figure out the model numbers? Because there were about 5,000 model numbers listed, none of which matched up with the model numbers that are on Amazon, so I just gave up.
Yes, and actually, I have done that for people, so you can reach out to me, or, you know, or call. We are happy to walk you through it. It is dense. I, I will say that I do feel for folks that are trying to get this done, trying to do it the right way, figuring out how model numbers work, serial number, like, all of that is a little bit daunting at times. Call us. That's why we're here, and that's why we have local folks in the office.
That's great to know. And then I have another question, which has to do with heat pumps, like, mini-split heat pump things. So are heat pumps to the point now where you can replace your gas furnace with heat plumps? Or do we still need to have dual systems if we're in Massachusetts?
So if I were speaking as a policy representative, I would say that decarbonization is where you need to be going. But I will say that there are some limitations, particularly with replacement of gas, not only from the pricing standpoint. Gas is still much cheaper right now than heat pumps. If you're on oil, propane, electric, it's much more economically sound at this point. But on gas, it's, it's just not, from my standpoint, there yet. So I'm talking to you as, as Margaret Song. And so I would, it really depends on your situation, and I would encourage you to reach out again. I think you have in the past, because some of those economics are changing now. And so that's why we do have these decarbonization assessments and experts that are in-house. Dan and David right now are in our offices and walking people through this process right now and saying, hey, in this situation, it might make sense, in this one, it may not.
Sounds good. I did a weather investigation, and I did my downstairs zone, which I did, replaced the gas furnace and did a heat pump, which, it turned out, the heat pump that they sold me did not have the right serial number, so I did not get my rebate, which was pretty disappointing. But like, for the upstairs, I was thinking of doing mini splits instead, but people keep saying, oh, you have to skip your gas. And I'm like, I don't, I don't see that point, so. Just, because I see a lot of new buildings that just have the heat pumps, and they have the ones that are now cold. the ones that are now cold. It's really, will they function in the cold temperature?
Yeah, and I think it's, in a newer building, you can actually design it so that it's optimally used versus, it's a little bit more difficult when you've got an existing situation and you're trying to retrofit that. That's why we say it's a little bit of a unique experience when it comes to that, because we want it to fit where you already have a building or already have a system.
Sounds good.
Wendy Howens, hands up.
Wendy?
Hi. Two comments. We have the Cape Light people come and do an energy audit and, yes, and do amazing insulation in our house. I think we got something like $8,000 worth of insulation for 1,200 bucks that we paid for, and it has made a tremendous difference in, in the warmth of our house. Second, we got a heat pump went in last December, and from December until now, we are still more energy efficient with that as a backup. Begs pardon, it has our, our old oil burner as a backup. We burned 56 gallons of oil last winter, which was really pretty nice. And plus, we had air conditioning in the summer when we had that really viciously hot period in June, July. You can, you can get your heat pump to talk to your oil burner or your gas furnace or whatever else, and it'll pick those in as a, as a backup if needed. We mostly heat with wood, but the thermostat's in the downstairs, and so we, I have the thermostat set for, the air conditioner comes on if the downstairs temp is above 76, and the heat comes on if the downstairs temp is below 55. And we, we very rarely exceed those anyway, just because the place is so well insulated. So that's a great program.
It is a great program.
And I did not ask any of these people to do this. So obviously, you're hearing real-life stories, so if that doesn't motivate you, I don't know what will.
We've done the energy audit and had them come, and we lucked out, though. We didn't have to pay anything, because they scheduled it, and the pandemic hit.
Yes.
And then when they rescheduled, they said, it's no cost to you.
Correct.
You're like, are you sure?
Yeah, 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 it's not a scam.
Yeah, it was great.
I know, I'm a direct benefit of it. I mean, my house was built in 57 and had the original red cedar shingles. And then when they did the audit, we realized that we needed to insulate the house and strip the side and everything, and, you know, the insulation that was done, and then the rest we paid out of our own pocket. But it's been amazing. I mean, I was paying $1,000 a month for oil before that, and then once we insulated, and then my father and I reshingled and exact the whole house, our oil bill was a fraction. I think I filled the tank once, the whole heating system, so it's been, but.
Yeah. Marketing's key, because I don't think a lot of people really, truly, you know, they think it's, you know, some kind of solicitation, and they, you know, they get the phone call or whatever, they get the things in the mail, it's, gets overlooked, and, yeah.
Yeah, it almost seems too true, or too good to be true. So we do rely on a lot of word of mouth, and obviously, those of you that are speaking up, it, it truly does benefit us, so thank you.
All right. So, thank you very much for coming and for having a great program.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is Consent Agenda Committee Appointment. Maggie Roberts to Human Services Committee Term Ending June 30th, 2027. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, roll call. Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, 500. Next item, licenses. Consideration of a new annual entertainment license issued to Grill &amp; More 340 Main Street, Buzzards Bay. Is there anyone here from Grill &amp; More?
Is there any outstanding issues?
No, we can recommend it.
Is, is the, so the karaoke is inside, there's outside entertainment. Is it acoustic or is it amplified? Do we know?
I don't think they delineated.
It's, acoustic is not checked off, it's live music.
It just says live, yeah.
Yeah. So.
But they would be, the noise, or they would have to be in compliance with all noise ordinance.
Yeah, but you know, we had outside venues with live music.
The courtyard experience from way back.
That they do need to be reminded that, that, that live music has to meet the decibels and.
Right, right.
Entertainment license can be revoked if it is not. There are complaints. It looks like they're done by 10 o'clock, which is better than I think some of the other situations that we had, so.
Yes.
Is there anything?
Yeah, I looked at them.
Yeah. Any, anything else? I can't find, I didn't find, like, sign-offs, so do we only just get things if it's comments?
There, so on page 30 in your packet, we've summarized the responses.
Yeah, maybe I was looking at the end instead of the beginning. Hold on.
Right, yeah, department comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
So we, we've summarized those in the table for the board.
Okay, that, that came before the application, so I was looking for it, like, after the application? So I, I guess I totally missed it, so sorry about that.
No problem.
I make a motion that we approve the entertainment license issue for Grill &amp; More 340 Main Street, Buzzers Bay, for Sunday through Saturday, live entertainment from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
As conditioned by departments.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Police said must follow-up. I was related by noise, so there we go. Okay, any further discussion? That's a roll call, so Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the transfer of a Class II car license, car dealer license from Coastal Motors and Equipment to Coastal Buzzers Bay, Inc., 236 Main Street, Buzzards Bay. It's like right across the street. This has been for a while, right? Any comments, discussion? What do we have here?
I do want to say, I want to thank Kathy and Ralph McDougall for the many years that they owned and operated this, this facility, that it did a lot of good to, you know, for people here in the village and the community. I mean, they would help people when they were hurting, you know, so they went out of their way and they were, you know, they really, they really did a great job. And so I think it's going to be, they're going to, the new, I hope the new owners will be just as good as, as Ralph and Kathy were. And I just want to say thank for Ralph and Kathy McDougall again for all the years that they were there and what they provided for a service.
Okay.
And it looks like no issues from any of the departments.
Yeah.
So a motion to approve the Class II dealer's license for Coastal Motors Buzzers Bay in gas condition by departments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean.
It's a transfer.
It's a transfer.
Yeah.
Any further, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, it is a roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, 500. Okay, next is events. Born After Prom 2025, May 16th, 2025 to May 17th, 2025, use of community, town property, community building. And I just want to note, I think there's a typo in the setup.
Yeah, it should be say May 16th.
16th, it says May 6th to May 17th, and I was like, whoa!
Yeah, 16th.
Setup on May 16th and closing on May 17th. All right. And it was correct in the cover sheet, but not on the application, so. I think this is a great program and.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Born After Prom 2025 event, May 16th, 2025 to May 17th, 2025, at the community building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Melissa. Is there any further discussion?
As conditioned by departments and give the town administrators office an update three months prior to the event.
Thank you.
So, there's a roll call vote, Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, next, policy. I Swam Recycling Policy Annual Update.
Good evening, board members. Madam Chair, Dan Barrett, General Manager of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Facility, and we're here for our annual vote and comment on our updated 2025 recycling center policy. Very happy to say that there are no changes. And things have been running really well up there. I know some of you folks get to go up there every once in a while, but the, the folks have the.
Running tight ship.
Yeah, and it's looking good.
Ooh.
So we're, we're happy to talk about that. We've also been to the Board of Health. Board of Health, shout out to them, actually did some reformatting for us. Caitlin, as usual, came through, she saw some things, and Barbara saw some things they wanted to change. So that was approved by them unanimously. Again, no fundamental changes, just formatting. So that went well, and we're here with you guys tonight to see if you have any questions or comments.
Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the I Swam Recycling Policy?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jean, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? None, it's a roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, 500. You are approved.
Thank you. Off to the printers tomorrow morning.
Excellent.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next is DNR Shellfish Regulations Annual Update and Separate Recreational and Commercial Regulations. Welcome.
Good evening. Hannah Lawrence, Director of Natural Resources. So the first recommendation for the updates to the shellfish regulations for the 2025 season is to separate out the recreational and the commercial, commercial shellfish regulations into two separate booklets. So you'll have two separate packets, and then the next change in the regulations is in regard to hours of allowable harvest.
Well, that's a typo, though, in your memo, 6:00 PM to 4:30 PM, is that right? In, in the memo or your cover sheet that you sent us?
So the, the regulations would be changed from the present sunrise to sunset to daylight savings, March 9th to November 1st, from sunrise to 6:00 PM. November 2nd to March 7th, sunrise to 4:30 PM. And October 1st through March 31st, sunrise to 4:30 PM. The last one is in regard to scallop season, so it would start at sunrise and go to either 6 o'clock or 4:30 PM. And that'll carry over from the recreational to the commercial as well.
Can you explain why you made that change? I mean, what if low tide is like?
Sure, so.
6:00 PM or something, I mean.
This, this was a previous time for the regulations, a number of years ago, but had been changed. But the main driving factor for switching this regulation really comes down to staffing and being able to efficiently and effectively protect the resource. We don't have the staff to, you know, be out until 6 o'clock, 8 o'clock in the evenings, you know, in the summer, if there's a, a late tide or, you know, an extra early tide, considering, you know, we cover many different areas of the, the natural resource field, which was why this recommendation was put in.
I know, I know you haven't been in the position long enough, but I can see it already, and so, thank you. And you've done a great job so far.
I do think it's a good idea to separate out the recreational from the commercial so that it's not confusing to people.
Quick question, if I might?
Yeah, Melissa?
I, I actually don't have the regulations in front of me. I apologize. Everybody knows I'm, I'm recovering from a surgery, but I just wanted to ask, with the times changing on the, the shellfish regulations, I knew it used to be like 6:00 or 6:30, and it was, if I remember well, I thought back in the day, in the summertime, it was later, and in the fall, winter months, they shortened it to 4:00 or 4:30. Is that something that you're doing here, or is this going to be a permanent 4:30 no matter what?
So that's correct. It would be reverting back to, I, I don't remember the year that had changed, but from a number of years ago, where there was in the summertime, the sunrise to 6:00 PM, and then the winter, the sunrise to 4:30 PM. So it just doesn't go, you know, until sunset.
So in the summer, basically, in the summer, basically, from after 6:00 PM to sunset, but this, this is, this is for non-tribal recreational permits, right? So if you're a tribal member who doesn't have a recreational permit. Yeah, but I'm just clarifying.
For me and tribal citizens, it's different, but I was talking, I was speaking for the residents in this, in this case. Okay, I was just curious how it was, if that was the change. Thank you.
Melissa, remind me, we made a change last year about the recreational shellfish regulations, where we, there used to be some sort of permit that was required for the indigenous people, and we took that out, right? So it's not required?
Yeah.
And we know that they're, they're not subject to this? Is that?
Yes, so basically, the law was written, and I know that we had seen this in there. Technically, a native person doesn't have to show any identification to harvest and access the inherent right to hunt and fish. But of course, we encourage our tribal citizens to show their identification, because our officers and EPOs and such, they have a job to do, and we should respect that. So with that said, I think what we decided there is that the town was actually issuing permits, and they were writing on the permit, Indian card. So in many ways, it's almost an insult to issue us an Indian card, a shellfish permit. It just made sense to just remove the permit, and all we need to do is show an ID in order to access and get, get our shellfish. So that was the reason why we took it out, because an ID is, giving a, a permit that says Indian card really isn't necessary, if that helps.
I have a question about Section 1.11.1, and this isn't a new change. I'm just asking for definition. So a portion of the southeastern side of Scraggy So, a portion of the southeastern side of Scraggy Neck, known as Sunrise Beach, is there a map that shows where that's, that portion of Sunrise Beach is defined?
So, excuse me, in the, um, the regulation booklets, we always have, um, a printed-out map that's attached, um, as far as, you know, what areas are open, what's closed, um, you know, what's conditionally opened or approved. Um, so, and we also have those maps available on our website, um, you know, for folks to look at, so you can kind of see where, where those areas are defined.
So you have the, you have the sign that says like closed, that's right by the beach? And the map will show like what the limits of that closure is, so past the limits of that closure, it's open, correct?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll show, it'll, it, it depends what it is, like if it's, um, you know, like a grayscale, or, um, you know, like boxes that kind of, um, illustrate the different type of areas, like it's represented, like the key. Um, so it'll only be like small sections that might be considered closed or opened, um, because we have quite a few, um, you know, where, where parts of like a larger area are closed, like permanently. Um, so it, it would be all on that interactive map.
Okay, but if, if you have a section that's closed, once you're out of that section, is it open? Is like all the shoreline open if it's not closed?
It depends, yeah, so the, the map will show you if it's, if it's open or not.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't show.
No, but it tells you right there, that's the, see the.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't show anything, so that's why I'm saying. It's okay, I'll go, I'll look at the map and follow up, it's another question later, if I need clarification, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions about the shellfish regulations? So, um, we need a motion to approve the, um, recreational shellfish regulations and the commercial regulations presented.
So move.
Is there a second? Jean?
Too late.
Yeah, Jean, all right.
Okay, I didn't hear Jean do it, I, I thought MJ said Jean, and then I wasn't sure if he was thinking.
I was just repeating. So a motion of P., Peter, second by Jean, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Melissa?
Yes, thank you.
Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero, you're all approved, thank you very much and welcome. Introduction of revised waterways regulations.
All right, thank you. So the next, um, is for our waterways rules and regulations, um, any of the changes, um, are for clarification, um, so I'll go through each of them individually, because there are quite a few, this has been a work in progress for a couple of years. Um, so in section one, um, use restrictions at town docks, floats, piers, landings, to include on-town properties. So the addition, um, to one point one is no repairs shall be made to any vessel, no fueling of vessels shall be made at any dock, berth, mooring, pier, or landing on any town property except with authorization by the harbor master or his or her representative with the fine of twenty-five dollars struck out. The next.
But can I, but, what does no repair shall be made to any vessel mean?
Um, so if, you know, say your boat, uh, breaks down, um, you know, engine troubles, whatever, you have to repair it, um, it just means that you're, you're not able to do it on like town property or any of these landings, you have to physically remove the boat, um, in order to, to do these repairs. Um, obviously, you know, if there's limitations, um, you know, where it needs to be done in a certain location, folks can seek, um, you know, authorization, um, by the harbor master or the representative, um, but just any repairs that have to be done. Um, for example, like if your boat has to come out of the water, um, and, you know, it, it's not able to go back and it needs to be repaired before it's, you know, usable again, um, you would need to relocate the boat to do these repairs.
Okay. Okay, so, no vote, I, I'm just reading, because repairs is very broad, it's, that's very broad.
No repairs shall be made to any vessel, period.
If it's something that's simple, it's.
Should there be something else along the lines like?
They're able to get like authorization if they need to be there, you know, longer. I mean, if it's something that's going to require a lot of work and, you know, being done on town property, um, you know, they'd have to get approval. Um, but otherwise, you know, they should either do this at home, or.
But should it say no repairs shall be made to any vessel on-town property? Or should there be a little more explanation?
Well, my question is.
Or not a, a period? Do you know what I'm, do you understand what I'm saying?
Or even just say.
No repairs shall be made to any vessel.
Or just, don't end that sentence and just.
Don't end it, but say.
Or, you know, or something like that.
No repairs or fueling of vessels shall be made at any dock, berth, mooring, pier, or landing on any town property except with authorization by the harbor master.
Sure.
I'm just thinking like if I have a boat.
I don't think there's supposed to be a period.
Well, hold on, hold on, we got too many people talking. All right, let's go. Melissa, you have a question. My caller, Melissa, here.
I just, you know, I was just curious, is this something that triggered this change? Is this, is it something that's a problem, that people constantly working on their boats on the dock, that we had to enact that rule?
Um, so it certainly does come up every once in a while. Um, this was a proposed change before I had started, like I said, these have been in the works for a couple of years, so it's very possible that there were, you know, several issues that really sparked this, um, this, you know, update to this regulation. Um, but it is something that we do come across every once in a while, where, you know, folks are having issues with their boats that need to be repaired, so, you know, they should, they shouldn't be doing it on their property.
Yeah, I just know, I mean, it's, it's just, it's kind of a hard, it's like, like, um, MJ said, it's kind of like, exactly what repairs, right? Because I mean, boats, boats are, boats are, break down a lot, and I, I know that, they say that, right? We know that boat itself means, you know, break out another thousand, right? So people, boats break all the time, so are we doing a disservice to our residents by telling them, sorry, you better be, be, get out of here? I mean, should, I don't know how to, how to word that, where it might be fair, and we can determine what is a repair and what isn't, instead of just saying, sorry, your boat's broken, see you later.
Like replacing a spark plug.
I don't know, that's just my opinion, I know a lot of people, and I know that.
Well, I, that's what I, I'm trying, that's why I asked, like, what, you know, what kind of repairs? I think, I think the, this, this is a little bit too broad, so if you have to pull up to a dock, right, and fix something on your boat that's loose, and you have to screw it to, I mean, you know, how are you going to get, how are you going to get permission from the harbor master for a minor repair that you really shouldn't need? I can see engine repairs.
Yeah.
And actually, I had a call from Rich Limbton tonight about the fueling.
Sure.
So the fueling part of it, I don't think that's very clear either, and so the few, no fueling of vessels shall be made at any dock, berth, mooring, pier, or landing on any town property except, except with authorization by the harbor master or his representative. So, we have, we have fueling stations, I thought I was supposed to say something about certified, the, only certified, state-certified fueling dock, so you don't want people getting gas cans and bring them up to their boat to fill their thing. I mean, that's what, that's what we don't want.
Correct.
We don't want people pulling up to a dock and like fueling the boat from a gas can. We want the, the fu, the correct fueling stations, if you're going to fuel your boat, you're going to use a licensed fueling station in the town of Born, so we don't have accidents. Totally, totally with that, I don't think that's what this says.
I can make that adjustment.
Yeah, and, so what we're, what we're trying to get at, if there's, if there's no overnight repairs, no, 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 so we have this thing that says this, that boats aren't going to be overnight with the dock without permission, right? So if, I've, I've got a problem with my boat, I gotta leave it overnight, you know what I get, they, they have to call, they get permission. If they have a, they can't do engine repairs, or to, to boat, I mean, you're trying to get away from them pulling their engine and sticking it on the, the pier, and, um, I think these are good changes, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, I don't think they're worded in a way to be, to get the meaning clearly of what you're trying to say.
Yeah.
So, um, so the, no vessels should be made at any mooring, or any dock, berth, pier, or landing on town property unless it is state-licensed or with the authorization. I think that's what we're trying to get at.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, for fueling, yes.
Yeah. And this is the first time we've seen it, so, even though other people have talked about it for years, like, you know.
Is this another, is there any other questions on this particular?
I, I don't know, anybody else have any? I'd like to see some cleaned-up wording on that.
Sure.
Yep.
My guess then was just with minor repairs, if it's something as simple as, is changing a boat battery out, if you're, you know, while you're at the dock, in the Taylor's Point Marina, I put my boat in, and I realized I was having problems, it's easier for me to unbolt, take the battery up, and then just replace it and come back down, instead of pulling it all the way out of the water and stuff, so I guess think, you know, or a lightbulb in my running lights as an example, so something minor.
Sure.
And it, it, it's just to be, like MJ says, to be worded better to give some, some discretion.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so the next proposed change is two point two point one, um, and it's in regard to proof of boat ownership, um, and it just clarifies that vessels that are registered, titled, and documented and leased by multiple parties must match the mooring permit holder's name. So essentially, your documentation has to have your name on it, um, even if you own it with other, other people.
Does the mooring then have to be in the name of all the people? Is that what you're saying?
So the mooring can only be in one person's name.
Okay.
So then, the, um, whichever, um, name is going to appear on like the registration or the C O D. has to be the person, um, who has the mooring, so they have to match.
So if it's titled in a number of names, do they just have to be one of the names?
Or? So typically, the way it works is you can title it in a couple of different names, but whichever name appears first on the title is, um, the one that is put on the registration. Um, you, obviously, there are some folks that, um, you know, won't meet this requirement because they've, you know, had, um, you know, their boat previously, where there's two names on the title, maybe it's a spouse, spouses, um, you know, where we just ask them if they can provide their title as well, so we can see that their name is also on it, and not just, um, that one person on the registration. But essentially, whoever's going to apply to be on the waitlist, um, the boat should be in their name.
So, so what happens if you're renewing your mooring permit, right? And you need to give your proof of ownership, and you've had the mooring for a number of years, and it's in your name, and the title, the title is listing three people?
Mm-hmm.
How would it, would you still match?
So, we go by what's on the registration, not necessarily the title, but if, you know, they can provide the title as supporting documentation, that they also own the boat, um, that's something we would, you know, accept, and that, this is for folks, you know, who have had a mooring, um, you know, not necessarily someone who is just coming up on the waitlist, you know, if they're, if they're looking to purchase a boat, they, they should make sure that it is, um, titled and registered accordingly.
Okay. Is there, for, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but my husband was a cove master, and so I don't, I've lived this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if, is there more instruction in the mooring regulations, like exactly what this means?
So, um, the mooring regulations do fall under the, the waterways regulations.
Yes, but there's more detail, is there more detail about the, the registration matching or how to title in the case of multiple?
Um, so I don't believe that it goes any further into depth than that, um, otherwise, you know, we do have a section where, um, it, you know, it just, it lists what you can provide for proof of ownership, um, you know, such as the, the registration, um, U S Coast Guard documentation, um, or if it's not a registered vessel, um, a statement of ownership and a photo of the vessel.
I almost feel it should say that the name on the reg- registration title, documentation or lease must match the mooring, the name on that must match the mooring name, I think that's what you're getting at. So, I'm, I'm just nitpicking, don't mind me. Okay, let's go to the next one.
Um, the next proposed regulation, um, is in regard to new mooring permits, um, so upon the initial issuance of a mooring permit, the applicant may not request a no boat for the mooring as a placeholder. A boat must be placed on the mooring in the first season unless prior approval by the harbor master is granted.
When, when do you plan on notifying that they are going to get a mooring?
So for this coming season, um, we are looking to make offers, um, in March, um, one of the other, um, regulation updates from the Shore and Harbor Committee is that, um, we will hopefully be able to make offers on a month-to-month basis, as well as, um, you know, either, um, moorings are forfeited or canceled, you know, either due to non-compliance or, um, they no longer want the moorings, um, so we'll look to, um, you know, hopefully make that change as well, but I think that comes up a little bit later in the document.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because if you were notified, the reason I'm asking is some of the notifications last year were, were, I think, pretty late, and, you, you know, if you don't find out until July and you're purchasing your boat after you get notified, you might not have a, you might not have it for that.
Well, yeah, that's why they can get approval.
In the first full season? I mean, is this like, you have to have a boat in the first full season?
That's.
Something like that might be what you're try, I think that's what you're trying to say, is if we notify you in April, you should have a boat.
Yes.
In that season, but the first full season is what I think you're getting at. Okay, what's the next one?
All right, so the next, um, update is, um, clarifying for boats to be out of the water for more than one full season, so written notification must be submitted to and approved by the harbor master, and approved by has been added, and the applicant must have had a boat on the mooring the prior season to request a no boat status.
Sounds good.
In section two point five point one, um, it's in regard to, um, the moorings per permit, so, uh, recreational is added, um, a couple of times to clarify what type of mooring, um, and recreational moorings cannot be transferred to a commercial mooring status. And the maximum number of moorings issued per person is three, um, which is the regulation presently, um, but adds the clarification of includes outhauls and floats and docks.
So if you have a mooring and an outhaul.
Mm-hmm.
And a float, that's, that's it.
Mm-hmm.
But if you have a dock with a float, you can keep a boat on it, right?
You can, yes.
So, okay.
Yeah, so that's, um, the, the dock is through, um, chapter ninety-one, through the state license, and then we permit the float, uh, that's on the end of the dock.
Is this new?
The, which, which one?
The three, including outhauls?
No, that's been in the regulations for a number of years.
It's just been not.
Just clarification.
Just, that's interesting.
Yeah, for clarification, yeah, um, I believe it was at least, uh, two thousand and eleven.
Okay, uh, we have a question from John York.
Yes, um, thank you, um, I have a couple of questions in this section. Um, let me, um, change my screen so I can look at the text while I'm talking to you. Okay, moorings. Okay, moorings per permit. Recreation line, commercial moorings are limited to one mooring permit per one vessel. Multiple mooring permits will not be issued for the same vessel. Now, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, anyone who's a Commonwealth resident can apply for a mooring in any town. There are several moorings in our town for which the permit holder holds a mooring for that same boat in a different town. There's not, we don't have any procedure, people don't check, people don't ask. But our regulation says multiple mooring permits will not be issued for the same vessel. Now, you might say, oh, that only means born mooring permits, so if someone has a Falmouth mooring for a boat, we'll still give them a born mooring for that boat. I don't think we should.
Well, we don't have jurisdiction in the other towns.
We should check that, and I think we should interpret multiple mooring permits will not be issued for the same vessel. That vessel, when we issued that second mooring permit, we just issued a second mooring permit for that vessel, even though we didn't issue the first one, some other town did. And the reason people do it is because in Borne, there are harbors which are better protected from hurricanes than many of the harbors in Falmouth. And they call it their storm mooring, and in the past, the D N R head, when I asked them, said, oh, that's just a storm mooring. But it's still taking a, a mooring space and putting someone further down, the rest of the people further down the waitlist. And I would like to see that mooring permits will not be issued for the same vessel actually enforced to mean multiple, if we're issuing a second mooring permit for a vessel, even though the first one was issued in a different town, we're not going to issue it. That's one comment, right, that would be a good thing, it's different than what the D N R is currently doing, but it's ambiguous in the regulations. The second comment has to do with, it's sort of a general comment about having the regulations in writing match the practice of how D N R enforces these. I'll just, along with that, mention that MJ, you said something about it would be more detailed in the mooring regulations. These are the mooring regulations, these, what you're reviewing right now are the mooring regulations. The text in here, I believe, should reflect the practice of the D N R in enforcing these. If it doesn't, there's nowhere else you can look for other texts, this is it. So I, I'll save my other, I have a detailed comment about another place where they don't match, but it's not one that's proposed to be changed right now. And I'll save that for the end, so Hannah can go on and go through her things, in spite of the strong tone of my voice, because it's really an issue to me when the regulations don't match the practice. I think that Hannah is doing a great job so far as in her new role, she's got a lot to take on, and I like that she's going after these and improving them some. And I told the Shore and Harbor Committee, I'm not sure you're going to fix it all at once this year, but any improvement is good improvement. Thank you.
So you were saying something, you don't have jurisdiction about the other town?
Correct.
And they probably know.
How would you know? There's no tracking.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have access to their, you know, their, however they do their permitting. So the next proposed change is in addition to point six point one, commercial mooring permits. Commercial mooring permit shall be issued to valid marine industry facilities. Commercial moorings can only be sold to other valid marine facilities with the approval of the harbor master. Commercial moorings shall be issued in coves as space becomes available per the waitlist policy, two point eight. And then the second addition is two point six point two, required registration slash documentation of vessels on commercial moorings. Commercial mooring permit holders shall not allow customers to place unregistered or undocumented vessels on commercial moorings. This regulation shall not apply to small craft not required to be registered or documented under current law. It shall be the responsibility of the permit holder to comply with this section for a fine of a hundred dollars.
Okay, can I ask you a question about commercial moorings? So are there designated moorings that are commercial moorings in various mooring fields?
Yeah, so they can get on the waitlist to have a commercial mooring. But then there are, for example, like Kingman and Parkers, you know, would be commercial moorings. You know, they have their own mooring fields, some of them are, you know, more of a smaller scale, you know, not, not quite to the extent that they have commercial moorings, but you know, in, in different coves, there are a few.
Are there moorings that are designated as commercial moorings?
They are, yes, so they have to be able to accommodate up to, you know, various sizes of different boats, as you know, they have different customers that they, you know, can put on those moorings. A commercial mooring costs more for an annual renewal fee than a recreational mooring does.
And so it's commercial moorings can only be sold? Is it the town selling them? I don't understand who's selling them.
No, it would be, you know, one commercial business to another. We don't, we don't have a role in the, you know, selling of the, like, the gear, you know, they would have to notify us. But we don't, you know, facilitate any of the sales.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Hi, MJ, just very quickly.
Yep.
With the moorings and the, and the waitlist, I know it's kind of off topic just a tiny bit, but I'm just curious. Is there a copy, so the waitlist, is that a public document so that we can see what the status is of the people that are on it? And the people can see where they are on that list? I'm not sure on that.
Yes, it, it's right on the website, it's on the, it's on the moorings and dinghy page, it's, I think, the first link on the page.
All right, so that's good, so folks can see where they are if they've been waiting a very long time, you're not constantly saying, where am I on the list? And they can check, okay?
Yes.
Is it getting updated now?
Yes, I just updated it about a month ago, so it'll be due for another update in the next few days.
Thank you, Hannah, you're doing an amazing job, I just wanted to add that question.
Thank you.
Next is wait, waitlist, right?
Yes, so the next one is actually in regard to waitlists. So some of the changes are scattered, so I'll just read the whole regulation. So in mooring areas where no additional mooring spaces are available, applicants must complete a mooring waitlist application and pay a nonrefundable administration fee of twenty-five dollars, so that's a change from fifteen dollars per mooring application. The applicant shall be placed on a waitlist maintained by the harbor master with mooring outhauls maintained separately. The applicant shall be responsible for providing a correct mailing address to the Department of Natural Resources annually and is solely responsible for following up on the application status with the harbor master.
Is this an annual fee?
It is, yes.
I, I'm, I'm not sure that's clear. It's in the next two point eight point one.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, annually, jab, get on a waitlist, there you go, okay.
Yes, the proposed change for that would be, the annual renewal would be a twenty-five dollar fee instead of the ten dollars that it presently is.
Okay.
In two point eight point four, regarding the waitlist procedures, much of that regulation stays the same with an addition of annual mooring offers will be available at the end of every month.
Oh, that's good. I mean, that's, that's really, that's, that's really good. And so just Melissa, two point eight point two says that the waitlist will be a public document available for viewing on the town website, so. Answers your question there too.
The next proposed update is under two point nine, and it just adds dock to the float section regarding mooring inspections.
You say inspection every, oh, okay, installation and everything. By inspections by the town or from an outside person that certifies it in writing that it's safe?
This is an outside vendor essentially, so we maintain a list of approved mooring installers and inspectors that customers are supplied with, that they can choose from to service their mooring. So, you know, whether it's installing it in the springtime, you know, removing it in the fall and doing their annual inspection every three years. For mooring outhauls, they usually do just like a self-assessment, so it's on, you know, the, the customer to provide that. They certainly can hire someone from the vendor list to do it, but they, they can do a self-assessment.
Okay.
Okay. All right, in two point ten, in regard to mooring buoys, each mooring buoy must be a spherical or conical in shape, must be white and have a one-inch blue band visible above the water. With the addition of the minimum diameter of a mooring buoy shall be twelve inches in diameter. And at the end of this regulation, to make it consistent through the next regulation as well, two point eleven, winter sticks, would be the addition of letter or number letter, so it's all consistent.
Yep. That's a good, that's a good change. Consistent moorings is much easier for the mooring survey than trying to figure them out, so.
Okay, so then the next proposals are under three point oh, floats, again, docks is added here. So in regard to placement, unauthorized floats, docks may be removed by the harbor master at the owner's expense. And then under outhauls, four point one, mooring outhauls, no new outhauls are permitted on public lands.
Is there a reason for that? Do they already have them, or maximum, or?
I would say probably a maximum, you know, to just keep these on private property, you know, folks who own waterfront property versus, you know, adding them onto, you know, something that's not on their land. Under four point five, outhaul post mooring locations, the outermost seaward post buoy is added here, must be visible at all tides and shall not impede and or be a hazard to navigation. Upon authorization from the harbor master can be used with a minimum size buoy on the offshore seaward side of a submerged outhaul mooring buoy shall be a minimum twelve inches in diameter. The outhaul number letter must be painted on the buoy as well as the seaward side of the landward post.
So that's adding that you can have an outhaul to a buoy?
So it really talks about like the visibility of the, the outhauls, you know, the harbor patrol is out patrolling, you know, they should be able to, you know, see it pretty easily, you know, from the boat. So just making sure that everything is visible. The next is in regard to abandonment, six point oh. Affecting, change to affecting, and then the addition of, in the event of such an emergency, the owner or master shall notify the harbor master of the name of the vessel, registration or documentation numbers if applicable, and the location of the vessel, mooring or object within twenty-four hours of the occurrence. His or her designee is added after harbor master, and then the addition, after vessels left at anchor unattended or stranded on the beach has been added for a period exceeding forty-eight hours shall be considered abandoned. The next proposed is under speed restriction, seven point one. For the purpose of these regulations, the following areas shall include but not be limited to be considered no wake zones. And the speed limit in said areas shall be no greater than headway speed, but in no case in excess of six miles per hour. So the areas are Cohasset Narrows, Monument Beach Marina Channel, the Bacassett River, the waters northeast and south of Bassett's Island, and Squatchy Harbor. Nine point two is the addition of reckless or negligent operation in relation to personal watercraft. So operators of personal watercraft, P W C, who operate a P W C at a speed or in a manner which presents a threat to the safety of the occupants on that P W C. Other vessels or swimmers in the immediate area shall be deemed to be operating in a reckless or negligent manner for a fine of two hundred dollars.
Are they subject to the no wake?
They are, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next is an addition of ten point oh, in regard to dinghies and kayaks. So ten point one, unregistered vessels. Unregistered vessels such as dinghies, kayaks and rowboats that are kept in the town of Borne and or stored on Department of Natural Resources dinghy and kayak racks must be marked with the United States Coast Guard sticker with the owner's full name and telephone number clearly printed in permanent ink.
Good. Everyone should do that, even if.
Exactly, it's a, it's a good rule to follow regardless.
It was interesting talking to the Coast Guard people that were at the mooring, at the stakeholder group that I went to of how many searches they do based on kayaks, I mean, there's hundreds of hours of, there's this kayak floating off with no identification and we have no way of knowing anything, so.
Right, it's more than fifty percent of the emergency calls that they respond to, so it's a lot of time and effort that goes into just a little boat floating around.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so the next addition, under eleven point one, refueling restrictions, adds mooring to, no fuel shall be transferred from any container while the vessel is made fast to any mooring town landing dock or pier.
That's good. It's the fueling thing that's, yeah.
Under section twelve, the compatibility with other governmental regulations, twelve point one has an addition of the most recent international navigation rules, AKA cold regs or rules of the road as applicable, published by the U S Coast Guard and codified in thirty-three U S C sixteen oh one to sixteen oh eight and two thousand one to two thousand thirty-eight. Twelve point two, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations such as but not limited to the most current version issue is struck out of navigation rules, international and inland as published by the U S Coast Guard, chapter ninety B of the Massachusetts General Laws, including other referenced regulations with the addition of C M R, a part of the Town of Borne Waterways Rules and Regulations. And then just a couple of updates to the definitions in regard to anchor. To hold a vessel in place by lowering a heavy weight or other device into the water by a cable, chain or line, with the addition of when the vessel gets underway, the anchor and associated ground tackle leave with the vessel. For dinghy, any vessel whose overall length shall not exceed ten feet primarily used for recreational purposes with and whose sole purpose is to travel to and from a larger vessel is struck out. Dock, sea pier has been struck out. A structure extending seaward of mean high water or seaward of salt marsh has been added. A longshore or out from the shore has been struck out into a body of water to which boats. into a body of water to which boats may be moored. Would remain, or excuse me, that, that part has been added. Float, the definition changed slightly. A seasonal floating dock used as a swimming platform installed temporarily. And for mooring, any semi-permanent anchorage installation consisting of a heavy anchor, a mooring buoy and a pennant has been struck out. And any system of structure consisting of an anchor, chain, pipe piling buoy and pennant by which a boat may be secured to the bottom. Under mooring permit, written authority issued by the harbor master for a permanent temporary seasonal with anchor, anchoring struck out, location, slip temporary float, dock has been added, or raft or outhaul with mooring struck out. Pennant, the length of the pennant should be approximately.
Do you have a raised hand, Melissa? What?
Yes, I do.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll let her finish, she was in the middle of a conversation, she can finish her sentence.
Okay, so in regard to pennant, the length of the pennant should be approximately one and a half times the distance from the water to the chalk plus the amount of the line needed to secure it to the complete orbit, that has been added.
You want to go now? Go ahead.
So I have to go back, so ten point one, the dinghies and kayaks. That's a totally new section, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what's that been, is there, where did that come from? Just curious, and how does one acquire, just for the people at home, a United States Coast Guard sticker?
So we, we have them available at the DNR. Usually all the marinas have them. Yep, you can just pick them up, they're free. Honestly, a lot of, you know, marinas do have them that they supply. The Coast Guard gives them away, we get restocked pretty frequently, they want to make sure that folks are using those. So, you know, this was in regard to, you know, that number that the Coast Guard had given us as far as, you know, more than fifty percent of their emergency calls are responding to, you know, unattended dinghies or kayaks that, you know, drift off because they're not properly secured and they don't know how to contact someone, you know, they don't have MS numbers, so you can't, you know, just look up in the database, you know, who they belong to. So it puts a lot of unnecessary money and resources into trying to find someone when this just, you know, was taken out by the tide or, you know, someone didn't tie it appropriately and they, they can't be contacted.
Yeah, no, that's great actually, because we've seen, if you even see on Facebook sometimes, people find a dinghy and they say, is this yours? You know, your dinghy washed up on my shore, so that's a good thing, I was just kind of curious where they get the stickers, so, because you know, people will ask, they'll think it's some sort of a permit or a, or a license that they need when we just say U.S. Coast Guard sticker, so I just wanted to sort of clarify, thank you so much again.
Sure, and this is definitely something we can send to anyone who, you know, is on the dinghy and kayak racks. We can include it with their renewal packet, so that they have it and can attach to their, their boats.
That's good. You're on pier.
So for pier, any structure built out into the water with the addition of that is not capable for use as a landing place. Pier means the dock, walkway, wharf, bulkhead, piers, piles, ramp and floats.
Oh, that's interesting. So a pier, it's like those walkways with like the ropes, so you can't land on it and the dock is where you could land, is that basically the distinction you're making?
It's that, that.
Dock or float, yes, okay, all right. That's good. Is that it?
That is it, everybody has other questions.
Sorry we asked so many questions, but.
No, that's okay.
That's a lot of, lot of work.
So I think this is great work. I think the only thing I think that would be, I think the main question we really had was the question that, in that first section. Was there anything else that we were confused about?
I think there was just a missing comma in one of the sections to clarify, but I think that was the other thing I had taken notes on.
Steve Arkaz's hand back up.
Uh, John?
Yes, thank you. I do have a few more comments. First, going back to the question I raised about moorings in other harbors, and the answer was that we don't have access to that information. We could, for example, in the mooring application, have a little line that says this boat does or does not have a mooring in another town. And if they, someone falsifies their application, obviously that's not a good thing, but I think that it's a reasonable thing to ask, and then we would tell them we refuse it. So you do have access to the person who's applying for the mooring. And if the other town, if they already have a mooring in another town, you can ask them that, just like you ask them what the boat's going to be. I personally think it's a good idea to issue moorings in a waitlisted mooring field to someone who already has a mooring for the boat. But I'd leave that up to the discretion of the harbor master, that's the harbor master's discretion. I'm just registering my view as a user of the waterway. Under the definitions of dock and float, there is sometimes a question about how it is that our town requires a mooring permit for a dock or pier that already has a chapter ninety-one license. And the answer is, has been in the past. Oh, we're permitting the float, which we can do. And there is a, a section in the chapter ninety-one called ten A that allows towns to issue permits for floats. But now we're changing our regulation, we're saying we're issuing permits for a dock. And the definition of a dock is any structure extending seaward of salt marsh or high water line to which a boat may be moored. So if we have a dock with no float that someone ties up alongside of, I don't know that we have the authority that has, and that has a chapter ninety-one license. What are we, are we issuing a permit for that dock that already has a ninety-one license? That seems to be something that could become an issue. And I'll just leave it at that, again, that's up to the town and the harbor master what regulations they want to promulgate, but that looks a little odd to me. So going on, outfalls, section four point five under the overhaul buoy, it looks like there's a missing text in there, there's a sentence that doesn't quite read grammatically.
What section was that again?
Section four point five. It's on the part of having a buoy on your outhaul. And it says, upon authorization from the harbor master can be used with a minimum size buoy. It looks like it says upon the author, authorization from the harbor master, a mooring with, an outhaul with an anchor and buoy can be used with a minimum size buoy on the offshore seaward end, that would make sense to me. Is my text in the, in the selectman's packet missing something that you have, or is that how it reads in yours?
That's how it reads.
Yeah, I would suggest putting in one little phrase after harbor master to say something about.
What can be used.
There's a couple other things, just thank you for making the changes you made. I could go through them all, but it would take time, but I just want to say, I have just as many thank yous as I did criticisms. So actually more thank yous, so you guys are making progress and I definitely appreciate the effort. There's a lot of things you've done in here that I really liked, thank you.
And can I just make one clarification to one of the points about docks and piers? So in the updated definitions, the structure extending seaward of mean high water or seaward of the salt marsh, so into the body of water to which the boats may be moored. So it is referencing the, that flow at the end of the pier. You know, based on the way I read the, the proposed regulation, or excuse me, the proposed definition for dock.
So it is the float that gets the sticker though.
It is, correct. Yes, we don't, we don't do anything as far as the permitting of the pier, we just permit the float at the end of that.
Conservation permits appear.
They have a role, yes, they play a role in it, but the state is the ones that ultimately.
Issue the chapter ninety-seven license, which is an interesting thing in and of itself, so.
Do you want to tweak this as a first reading because there may be some changes they need to bring back, or do you want to make?
I think, I think we want to make sure that we keep moving on this so that it is approved in time for January. I think this, this was obviously a lot of work and, you know, sometimes bringing things to people that don't have the background of all the discussions that gone, gone on, you know, means like, you know, what's the context, so. Yeah, if we can have a couple of those things, like, just like tweaked a little bit, I think you bring it back as soon as you can and we'll get it on the agenda so we can get it approved, and thank you very much. I think they, I thought when Rich told me about the fueling piece, that fueling piece of gas cans being brought to piers or moorings, I think that's a really good piece to put into the regulation, so. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. The next item is opioid funds. But I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we want to, just because I see Helen Gordon's been sitting here and this is if the CWMP review and approved documents for MEPA filing is not going to require a lot of discussion, if everyone has read it and is comfortable with it and we're just going to, we, we've kind of said, let's go forward with the MEPA, I don't want her to sit around through a couple more discussions, so. Is there, I mean, are there any comments or concerns about the CWMP, or are we, we good to go?
I make a motion that we approve the documents for the MEPA filing.
Motion by Peter, and second by Anne Marie to approve the documents for the MEPA filing. It's in item eleven on our agenda. Is there anything you want to say, Helen, or do you just, we all good?
No, I think we, we discussed it mostly at the last meeting. And we're on schedule as we had discussed, so generally, you know, December fifteenth will be when we submit this to the environmental monitor with all the report and so forth. December twenty-third, it will be published. So it's a thirty-day comment period. And we wouldn't anticipate hearing anything from MEPA prior to that. On some occasions, they do it within two weeks, but based on their, the amount of work that they've been doing and kind of lack of staffing, I think that will be up against the end. As we agreed, we're submitting it to as a extended ENF. We're asking for a special review. And basically, we would anticipate sometime to receive comments no sooner, I would say, than January twenty-ninth. It could be as early as the thirteenth, but I would doubt that. And then it would be either a certificate of acceptance with typically a number of permit requirements. They would be, for example, outlining if you were going to follow through with phase one or phase two, these are the permits you'd have to get. These are the subsequent studies you might have to submit to be approved. Or they could require a few more reviews where they have some interaction with the town asking questions. I don't necessarily anticipate that either. And then we've been pushing to get on, we had initially been targeting the fall twenty-twenty-five special time meeting, but I know that you'd like to do spring of twenty-twenty-five. So we'll be right up kind of against that March deadline if we get a certificate of acceptance, say in that January twenty-ninth period. You'll probably want to start talking about having, being starting preparations for getting in your sprint timing. So I think we're in good shape. The only thing I did, he did ask me to ask the select board if they wanted their own cover letter to go in with the ENF. It's not required, you saw the copy of the cover letter that we prepared on their behalf. You can send it in like that unless there's anything specific you want to say in order to go through with the mooring.
Okay, I want to mention to people that are watching at home that the draft, this whole big MEPA package draft is on the town website under the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. It's like, there's a, under that, there's a draft for the MEPA thing. It's a, it's a big document, so it was not in our packet, but it is on the, on the, on the website. And I just had a question, so isn't December fifteenth is like the end of that period of, from this to December fifteenth, you file?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, can you file on, after whatever the beginning of that period is, like December tenth or something? Does that make any sense to file a couple days earlier?
Well, we'll file, if it's due on the fifteenth, we'll file, file before June eighth.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so it's not just, just, and then the thirty-day comment period is the public comment period where the public will be able to make comments on the MEPA filing. That's correct, right, okay.
And if I might, Madam Chair, the other point I wanted to make is we have been in touch with the town administrator and we have had a discussion about the advertisements being put in the local papers for, they should not be put in prior to November twenty-third because they have to be done within thirty days of when we submit to the ENF. So we've had those conversations with Marlene and she has the example, we'll be working with her directly to make sure that she doesn't need any assistance from us. As I said, we'll file in the environmental monitor. We are required, there's certain stakeholders that are on MEPA's list that we have to provide hard copies of the document too. So that's, there's about two stakeholders on that list. Typically, it's not unusual that communities have us prepare another hard copy or two for, to be located somewhere that can be viewed by the public if they so desire, so sometimes communities put the, a hard copy actually in the library or something like that so people can actually go and look at it if they're having difficulty on electronically. So we would just need to let, know and maybe through Marlene, you could let us know how many hard copies you might want for the town to do that. But yes, you will have, it will be on the, it is on the CWMP website and it will continue there throughout the comment period. There is a specific, all comments are done online for MEPA. So when it is advertised, they indicate the process that the public can go through to send in their comments, and then they organize them. And then they organize them and evaluate them and prepare the certificate for acceptance or, um, continue with asking, um, some questions for clarification.
Sounds good. All right, so we have a motion to approve the documents for the MIPA filing, motion by Peter, second by Ann Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, Melissa?
Yes.
Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Step accomplished. All right, thank you. All right, going back to item ten, the opioid settlement funds discussion application process for mini-grants.
So if, um, I'm happy to lead off and Ann Marie can join in at any point, please.
Okay, that's cool.
So we met internally, uh, with finance, health, my office and Ann Marie. And what we would like to propose for the board's consideration is that we set aside fifty thousand dollars of the opioid settlement funds to be used for mini-grants for, um, private organizations to apply for up to five thousand dollars per application. I do want to note that these are, these mini-grants would not be available to other units of government. I, I just want to be clear about that. This is for nonprofit or, or, or other private entities who work in this space, not for, not to shift money to other governments. And so I'm specifically thinking of Barnstable County and, um, school depart- school departments or regional schools. So, um, it's not intended to offset operating budgets.
So, let me ask you a question, so if the substance free coalition wanted to ask for a grant for?
I believe they have nonprofit status.
Yes, but, but if they, if they asked for an application, well, I'm just thinking what they came in, for five thousand for Upper Cape Tech and five thousand for board schools, is that two applications or they can only ask for five thousand total?
They can only ask for five thousand.
Total, total of five thousand.
Right. Okay.
And we have in your pocket a draft, essentially one-page application where we would gather the information. The, the decision would be made by the health director. The applicant would be required to report because we, the town, we have an obligation to report on the use of these funds, so. And they would be on a reimbursement-only basis, so the, the applicant would have to come, apply, get, uh, an approval from the health director prior to expending any money.
And there are some guidelines with respects to how the money can be spent. It can't just be spent on whatever.
Well, it has to meet the criteria.
Has to meet the criteria of.
Settlement funds.
Of the settlement funds, right, so. But the reporting out piece is important because, you know, the town is required to report, um, to the state on how the funds are used. So having that as part of, and I just think it's good practice for, you know, for the entities themselves to kind of reflect to see that it's, you know, whether they had success for it and how it was received. In some, some cases, you know, the money, um, is turned over each year. You see a lot of, um, the same mini-grants being expended each year to some of the same organizations to, to have an impact. And the other criteria obviously is that the money spent on born, unborn, foreborn.
That's good. The first page of the application, it says, "Rolling application will be reviewed by the director. Notification will be made within X amount of days from receipt of the application." I hope we can put in a, a set number on there because.
We will, yeah.
So we're not sitting on them and then we forget about it and stuff, so we get them.
It's not a complex, mini-grants are not complex in such time that would, you know, take weeks or months.
So when we set aside, that, does it, is there someone says the grant award's up to five thousand dollars per year or something or?
These grants are available up to a maximum of five thousand per applicant. But it doesn't say per year, it just says per applicant.
Missy's got a hand up.
Melissa?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, I think the reimbursement i- is okay, but I think, you know, you have to remember too, some of these nonprofits, the smaller ones, they may not have five thousand dollars upfront to put, and this is a, oh, I'm not sure I agree that we should be doing it on a reimbursement basis. These are small mini-grants, why wouldn't we just get a project outlined in a budget and then hold them to it? I mean, if the money is not expensed the way they tell us, then we could demand it back or there's other means. I just don't know as if some of these smaller nonprofits, you know, five thousand doesn't sound like a lot, but some of them it might be. Some of the bigger organizations, I mean, like the tribe, we, we, that wouldn't be too hard for us, but it might be for another smaller organization that doesn't have, you know, a huge amount of money in the bank, so I just wanted to note that.
And, um, so along, so we actually did have a pretty robust discussion with Erica about this and our, the compromise was that we would allow a group to come in kind of in the middle and request a drawdown. So, you know, they, they can, they can apply, they can get their award, they can spend, you know.
They can ask for multiple reimbursements during, or like, or halfway through.
They can ask for, they can ask for one, uh, like one, they can ask for one drawdown and then one fa- final payment. So we did talk about how, you know, we don't want to make, we don't want to make it too burdensome, but we also are, I mean, Erica is not going to support us not doing it on a reimbursement basis. That exposes us to a lot of risk, so.
I, and I understand that, I'm just saying that I've never received a mini-grant where they made me reimburse, where I had to get reimbursed for it because it's a mini-grant, okay? The only grants were that, uh, we'd had some other larger ones, of course, that you had, uh, you might need a reimbursement for, but that, that's all I'm saying. I just, it's such a small amount of money, um.
But I think under the municipal finance.
I know, this is my, that's just my thoughts, that's all.
I think it's municipal finance drives this.
I understand Erica's points.
Yeah.
But mini-grants, I've never, I've never had to do that.
Okay, and so when we're out of the fifty thousand, we're going to come back?
Possibly, but we, possibly both.
I think the, so the board would like a report when the, if the fifty thousand gets expended. There should be a report to the board and a discussion about whether we should continue this or whether we're now in the process, we've done our fact-finding and all of other, other stuff, so.
Right.
Okay.
Because along with this is the, you know, strategic plan, the consulting and the needs assessment, which will map out, you know, more of a five-year or multiple-year strategic plan to expend some of the larger amounts of money, which I think is.
I, I think this is, uh, helps us get some, something going to some of the small things and I think it's great work.
I think it'll be helpful, I think it'll have an impact.
Not to compromise some of the process, it doesn't have to be approved by the select board. We would like updates eventually, but how much money is spent, but.
But it's good that this money, we're, we're given the opportunity to get this money out there into the community where we can help organizations that can, that need it and can promote, promote this, you know, this, so it's good, it's, it's good use of the money and it's, it's about time, it's been, yeah, so.
Okay, so there's a, is there a motion to approve the, um, opioid settlement?
Process for mini-grants?
Yeah, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Peter, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call, Melissa?
Yes, I'm not liking the reimbursement, but I'll vote for it, otherwise it looks good, thank you.
Uh, Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Next, digital equity plan.
Okay. We have Wendy and Jed from the SciTech Committee.
Okay, so is this from you, Marlene?
No, this.
This is from?
This is from SciTech, the, their pri- prioritization for your consideration.
Okay, is there someone that's going to speak to this?
Hi, Ken.
Jed.
Uh, hi, this is Jed Johnson, I'm the vice chair of the committee.
Okay.
So I can kind of go through this pretty quickly for you, so. So basically, we took the digital equity plan recommendations, uh, from the plan, uh, that the county did and kind of just boiled, uh, I picked out three and kind of blew out a little more detail on them. There's not a lot of money here, and so we're suggesting you might want to just look at the first or sec- first and second recommendations because it would only make, make sense to just, um, pursue something you can really do a good job on. The top recommendation that came out from the report that we also stand behind is extending public Wi-Fi at some of the municipal buildings, namely the library, probably the community building. We're not detailed, uh, we don't have detailed information about any other ta- uh, buildings that might have that, but, um, that's the main thing we recommend. Uh, it turns out Wealth Fleet has done the same thing, they're also covered by Barnstable County I T, by the way. And they were able to extend their public Wi-Fi, uh, by using some of the same, the same management systems that they're using now to run their network, possibly wanting to do, follow that same model, um, and do that. The next recommendation we had was that if there's any money left over to look at the lending program at the library. What you might consider doing if you go down that road is talking to Chris Oliver in the school department because he can kind of highlight the sort of, um, things that the students might need to lend or borrow, I should say, especially in terms of Chromebooks. And then the third recommendation was to expanding the, um, digital navigator program. I don't know that, that any kind of, uh, one-time funding is going to help that at all, but if, that would be the third place to go if you could. So that's a quick rundown.
I can see for the chair.
Yes, Peter?
I can say over the years from going to different beach, like Monument Beach, um, on the beach itself, next to the Marina, some years, some summers, there would be internet access, some, some summers, like last summer, it was very spotty intermittent. Also over here at Brothers Bay Park, for many years when we did the expansion and remodel of Brothers Bay Park, there wasn't internet access, um, but then in the last couple of years, there's no public internet access, was, was off more than it was on. And this is from someone that walked around that park every day. And so, and I know they're talking about improving access, you know, for the library and the community center and there's different things here, but we had existing places that we had good access for and then became spotty or intermittent. And I wonder if we could also want to re, you know, maybe for next summer, look at those places and see if it's, see if we can fix those because especially on a beach where people have cell phones and, you know, if it's a nine-one-one and, you know, in, in the, in the, data signal's down, all of a sudden you have no Wi-Fi to go to to call, so I guess wondering for, for emergency or public safety, if we should be looking at improving some of those places as well.
And interestingly enough, because I think that's one of the things that Wealth Fleet did, is they, they increased their Wi-Fi to the public beaches. So that.
Yeah, let me just interject here and mention that they spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars running the fiber out to the beach. I think that's a little bit beyond the budget here, and I love the idea, but I just want to let you know that that Wealth Fleet had to put a lot of money in to get the fiber out to the beach.
Yep.
The piece of the Wealth Fleet network that I mentioned is they have like a fire station in some schools that were already on the municipal network and they basically put outdoor access points at those places.
Extend.
And extend the current municipal, uh, the current municipal network using guest access. And that's basically what we're proposing here.
Yeah, if we can do extenders at some of these places and get it broadened out, so it's.
Well, think about Monument Beach, I mean, if you're at Monument Beach, there's got to be, there's got to be Marina internet access.
Well, that, that's my point.
Yeah, so, um.
Yeah, if it's, if it's part of the town network, it's managed by the county I T, it's an easy thing to do.
It's an easy extension.
And I do, I, the Buzzards Bay Park access is really important, I think, also.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering what happened with that.
What happened is you have cameras on top of the gazebo that go out around the park and towards the splash pad, so for liability. Because don't forget in the beginning, when we had that kid that lost his toe, we had the video to show the actual footage of it. So then all of a sudden, you, you go five years later, three years later, whatever it is, and all of a sudden the reception or the, the access is minimal at best at times. I guess wondering if they, if they shut it off and didn't put it back on or, I don't know what happened, but.
So I think public access.
There's a hand up.
Is probably a good, that Wi-Fi extended, extending public Wi-Fi is probably a good thing, okay?
Which was the first action item?
Yeah.
That we had proposed.
Okay, so what's our next step with this, Marlene? Like, where are we with this whole process here?
I would like the board to, to vote one or, you know, one or two things to say this is what we're going to focus on. And then I will put together the, the grant application and the budget.
Okay.
And actually get, you know, try to get the award from the funds that were reserved.
Okay, it's a, it's a little bit late, so can we put this off to one more meeting maybe? Unless you guys feel you're ready to vote, I don't.
I'm set to vote, but I don't know about anybody else.
Um, I'm good to vote to, um, authorize the town administrator to pursue, um, the first step in the digital equity plan recommendations to expand public Wi-Fi access.
Second.
And if possible, you know, other expansion, you know, expansion locations.
I'll start with that one.
Yeah.
Just, you want to start with one?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, let me start with that one.
I would start with one and then I would get, um, I would, I would say maybe get some, if, you know, helpful input from any department heads on lending program or the digital navigator program. I don't know how those would interwork, but I think focusing on extending public Wi-Fi, let's focus on.
Let me do that.
Wendy and Melissa.
Well, Melissa first, Melissa?
Actually, I was raising my hand for Wendy, so I'm.
Okay.
With respect to getting, uh, better Wi-Fi at the beaches for public safety, part of that is separate from this plan. We're still working on a grant to get, um, approval for things like better Wi-Fi at the Barlow's Landing Beach for purposes of, of public safety. And I expect that will certainly need to be looked at for all the other beaches. This, uh, first, uh, thing in our, on our recommendations, um, most at the places where people, all, all, everybody has public access and, and uses it often. And we have, we have school kids that are like driving far from where they live so they can pick up a Wi-Fi signal so they can do their homework and their research. And that's why we prioritize the library and other, other public, um, buildings and to support the, the library trustees are all for this, as I understand it, school committee. And this would also eventually, we hope, be able to be extended to other places when we get better broadband service in the first place. But this is, this is where we can start, if that makes sense to you.
Okay. So in general, public Wi-Fi access enhanced, so, so we have a, um, we have a motion by Ann Marie, did we get a second?
Yes.
Motion by Ann Marie and a second by Peter, take the first step, um, in the digital equity plan to expand public Wi-Fi access. Okay, uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, Melissa?
Yes.
Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. There you go. There you go. Okay, we look forward to your...
Thank you.
All right then. Town administr, I think that's a town administrator's report.
I have kind of a long one, but I'll talk fast.
That's okay.
I just want to remind everyone that the fire chief has issued a ban on all outdoor fires due to the dry and windy weather conditions. The current ban is in place through Friday, November 15th, and the chief will determine whether to extend it. Just a reminder that MassDOT will be holding an open house at the community building for the canal bridge replacement project. The open house is scheduled for next Monday, November 18th, with an afternoon session from noon to 3:00 PM and an evening session from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The construction and demolition transfer station located at Ice Swim is closed today through Thursday for repairs. It will be reopened on Friday, November 15th. Through the end of October, Ice Swim has diverted 11.94 tons of food waste from the landfill so far this calendar year. The Shore and Harbor Committee is holding two public meetings tomorrow, Wednesday, November 13th, to discuss their ongoing municipal harbor plan. There'll be an in-person meeting at 1:00 PM at the community building and a 6:00 PM virtual meeting. More information is on the town's website. The recreation director is working hard to staff the lifeguards at Monument Beach a week earlier than in years past. This is not guaranteed yet, but we do understand that it is an important desire of the recreation committee and the community. Katie is also working to increase the number of no-cost programs in the schedule so that families have more options that are free of charge. The town is continuing the senior work-off program again this year, and 30 volunteers are working in various departments as of November 1st. DPW is working with the utility companies to hopefully keep the roads open without a winter moratorium. We will require that utilities patch and clean up the excavation the same day with hot mix asphalt. No cold patch is permitted during the winter. We will not allow excavation if there is heavy snow on the ground the day after a storm or the day before a storm is forecasted. The utilities must also notify the DPW in writing prior to the work being completed. DPW and engineering are working together to put a brief scope of work together to study potential traffic and roadway changes in the president's road neighborhood. I know that some residents have been requesting this for a while, and the DPW will be submitting a modest Chapter 90 funding request to you soon. Engineering is moving forward with the Sagamore Beach Ramp Improvement Project, and the construction contract was awarded on October 17th. There was a pre-construction meeting on November 6th, and materials have been ordered. Seaward work on the beach will begin later in November with excavation and binder installed before winter weather. The project will wrap up in the spring with final pavement and punch list. All seaward work will be completed before April, April 1st, and we will be off the beach before the shorebird time of year restrictions are back in place. It is possible that the parking lot may be closed and fenced through the duration of the project, but we will evaluate that once we get started, and we may be able to open it temporarily between construction phases if it's safe. Work is also underway with the Puritan Bog Restoration Project at Little Buttermilk Bay. We are evaluating alternatives for salt marsh restoration with potential benefits including renaturalization, floodplain storage, coastal resilience, wildlife habitat, and water quality improvements. Public outreach is scheduled to begin in January of 2025, and future alternatives will be presented to the select board and conservation commission for your discussion. Thank you.
Who was awarded the contract for Sagamore?
CC Construction.
Okay, thank you very much. We have in our packet minutes of October 9th, October 15th, and October 21st.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 9th, October 15th, and October 21st, 2024.
Second.
Give it to Melissa.
Sure.
Motion by Peter, second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Committee reports.
Tomorrow, the Affordable Housing Trust and Housing Partnership are meeting here. We will be discussing the 300-unit 40B that La Vusso is bringing forward, so for over with the old pit, or no, actually, Edge Hill Road and Larnis Frilary Road, so right, you know, the access road where you go to Bondi Alimentary and the DPW. So that's going to be, you know, it's, you know, our mission is for affordable housing and providing it anywhere we can, but the devil is in the details, so we'll be going through those details.
Is it 300 units?
Yeah.
I feel like I've been to a million meetings, but whatever.
Well, we had MassDOT Bridge meeting, but that'd be an open house, so.
That's true.
Yeah.
Correspondents?
Correspondence, November 12th, 2024. A, Talent Bank for Council on Aging, D Young. B, Joint Base Cape Cod November Meetings. C, Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative Report. D, DEP Final Revision 1, 2021 Source Removal Report. And E, DEP Draft J3 Range Environmental Monitoring Report. F, Waterways Application 42 Monument Ave. G, 829 Seneca Highway Conservation Review. H, Xfinity Canceling Cable Cards. I, Thank You Note from the Recreation Department Regarding Trunk Retreat. J, President's Road Stop Sign Request. And K, Constable Request from Howard Coleman.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Future agenda items related to correspondence. There, there was, there is information on the constable which we'll consider at a future meeting. I don't know if there's anything else we have to do.
What about the appointment that would be consented in?
Yeah, that'll be on...
Yeah, we'll put it on.
Big meeting dates. October 14th, we have our mayor, one of deliberations. We also have the, I have posted a meeting for the MassDOT Bike Path, just in case people want to say things, will be, will be posted for active participation. Just, the list is there. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ann Marie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Melissa?
You lose her?
Yes, she got a thumbs up. You're supposed to speak. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Mr. Wilson, you needed the voice there.
She recognized you. I think you're covered.
Meeting is adjourned.